Good evening. It is a little after seven and it is, I actually don't know what day it is. I apologize. Thank you. It is April 17th, the first day of the NHL playoffs. So, welcome. We do have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. The first order of business on our agenda is approving the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second?
Okay. We will now vote to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, would you please briefly review the agenda for everyone?
Absolutely. So, really excited about Excellence in Action tonight. We have teachers and coaches here who are going to share about our work with letters. So excited about that. For discussion, we have comprehensive literacy update for 612, some information about student travel, few policies for everyone to go through, ratification of sale of bonds, really excited to hear that information, and approval of our 287 partnership, long-term facility maintenance expenditure budget, and then some more final policies that'll be for action. And we'll get some updates from the board members and their committees as well as me.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. We are moving on to our Excellence in Action tonight, and I would like to welcome Bethany Van Osgood, our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Alyssa Barnes, a kindergarten teacher at Countryside, Sue Johnson, Learning Specialist at Countryside, and Sandra Harley, Literacy Coach, who are all going to present some information to us and to the public about our letters training that we're doing on literacy. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Dr. Stanley, board members, colleagues, and community, we're so excited to share with you this initiative around our letters programming, and I'm going to let Sandy just take it away.
So, I'm Sandra Harley, Literacy Coach, and so, letters is an acronym for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, and we are all very excited to share with you a little bit about our letters initiative. And so, if you want to go to the next slide? Thank you. So, what is letters? Letters is a comprehensive, extremely empowering professional learning, all based on the science of reading. It is the knowledge, it's deep knowledge, and it's knowledge that helps our teachers and allows our teachers to understand the science behind how a child's brain learns to read, and then also what might be happening if the child is struggling to read and write. So, it's professional development. Letters is not, it's not a curricular resource and/or a reading program, although it does allow our teachers to have different tools, strategies, and scaffolds for using with any good reading program. And so, last but significant is that the Edina curriculum does align to the science of reading at all tiers of instruction, and it also allows teachers to differentiate with intentionality. So, why letters? It says, "Letters bridges decades of research-based practices inspired by..." I can't even see that. Can you see that? Improved outcomes for all of our students. And so, and we know that reading is key, right, to both academic and life success. And so, if you want to go to the next slide, please. Okay, so what's happening here in Edina? We have our early implementers, and so this is our initial cohort. We started about two summers ago, so we have 24 elementary teachers in volume two right now. And so, we are on track to complete Letters by July of this coming summer. And it is really, if you don't know the structure of Letters, there's two volumes, volume one, volume two, and each volume consists of about four units, which is about 72 hours of graduate-level work. So, totaling about 144 hours. So, it's a lot. And we also have 157 K2 teachers. That includes also our multilingual teachers, our special education teachers. We have our speech pathologists, and our intervention teachers are all involved in Letters. And they are on track to complete Letters by the summer of 2024, with many of them opting to complete this coming summer. So, that's a great thing. We also have 15 early learning staff that are on track to complete Letters by this coming summer, as well as 12 elementary principals and district administration completing their course, which is an administrative piece to Letters. It's kind of a big-picture overview, and they are also on track to complete this summer. And then, with, really with the end goal here in Edina is to get all of our kindergarten and third-grade teachers trained in Letters. And again, that includes our speech pathologists, special education, multilingual, and then also our intervention teachers. And we are also in the process of piloting what they call Letters Evolving. It's referred to as Aspire, and we are currently piloting some of that work for the fourth through 12th grade teachers. So, and I'm going to turn it over to our teachers. Good evening. I'm Sue Johnson. This is my 23rd year teaching in Edina, and I'm currently a reading interventionist at Countryside.
My name is Alyssa Barnes. This is my eighth year here in Edina, all in kindergarten at Countryside, and we are going to move forward and show you guys a little video of some of the work of Letters in Action.
Let's find it on our word wall. Okay, look at the mouth. Mouth is open. Two teeth. Hey, let me see. Good. Nice. Beginning or the end? Where is it? Say it again. The first word is shh. Let's do it together. Say it without a f. I'm going to change the b to a f. Good. I'm going to change the f to a w. Perfect. Oh, you're good. Like another name for friend. It's a pal. The "l" sound has our voice box turned on, but I want you to look at his mouth. Little. Is my tongue sticking out like this? No, it's not. Go. Where does the "door" would belong? Over by balloon or by dog? I agree, because door, dinosaur, duck, they all sound the same at the beginning, right? If a word is...
How many syllables?
One syllable. And it ends in which four letters? Oh, see, which four letters? What do I do? I double it. For example, everybody say us. Say Paul. Say buzz.
You know, it doesn't get better anytime I watch that thing, but wow. I guess the biggest takeaway I've had from my experience with Letters is just the importance of the explicit sequential instruction in the 44 phonemes, sounds, as well as phonetic awareness, and then the phonics. I think it's important for all, for all the students, but for me, I work with small groups of students, and I think for certain student groups that I work with, it's pretty crucial, like our ML students or any students that are struggling with any of their literacy skills. It's pretty, it's a game changer, quite frankly. And I think our, you know, the language is more understandable if we explain to them how the sounds are organized, right? And so, that's what that sound wall does. It kind of shows the kids, like, how do you shape your mouth? And then, we give them practice. We model it, and then they practice it, as well as, like, what are the ways to make the long "a" sound? It's all up there for them, so we can reference it and really give it sort of a tangible connection. And I, I mean, really, it's a lot of work, the letters training, but it's so worth it, and it's been really a game changer. I've been here for 23 years, and it's phenomenal, in my opinion. It just really shapes some of the background of what I already know, and then making it presentable to students. And, you know, Alyssa, I don't know what you think about...
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, I agree with Sue. It's the best PD I've ever had. I haven't been teaching as long as Sue, but I can tell you that I am blown away through every single unit that we've gone through. The biggest shift I've seen is just the anchor of our literacy shifting from the lens of 26 letters to the lens of 44 sounds. I grew up with word walls. I'm sure you guys did the same, where you had 26 letters, and you put all of your words that you're focusing on underneath one of those letters, and you'd have the word "to" and the word "the" right next to each other. But if you think about that, it really doesn't make sense to have "to" and "the." It's two different sounds in the beginning. And so, shifting to the sound wall, where we have all 44 sounds, and how to explicitly make that sound with our mouth, that is the anchor to everything that we do. And so, as we dive into our tier-one resources, in kindergarten, our first two words are he and she. And so, right away, we can say, wow, there's that long "e," like in feet. There's that "sh" sound, like in shell. And so, instead of teaching you, oh, well, those aren't one of the 26 sounds, no, we actually already spent the time understanding all of those 44 sounds. And so, all of our resources seem more rich. I feel like I have another teacher in the room that's helping me in everything that we do. A quick little example, we are just, we do calendar every day in kindergarten. We, it's a big part of what we do, and we were talking about the month of March, and one of my little kindergartners completely on their own said, wow, the word march, m, arch, it has a consonant, a bossy "r" like arm, and a digraph like chair. And so, that was an example of, wow, they're applying this wide lens of literacy into all parts of our day. And so, I can't recommend Letters enough. It's been a game changer. I feel super honored to be a part of that first cohort, and I can't wait to see how it really shifts and continues to improve Edina's literacy strongarm.
And I think just the more they know about the actual sounds, they can manipulate them, and it's just going to help them with their reading and spelling going forward. And it's really been a real helpful tool for us as teachers to be successful and for our students to be successful.
Absolutely. Can you go ahead to the last slide, please? So, as you heard, Edina is definitely defining excellence with this initiative. I'm often in circles in the metro of curriculum leaders, and they want to know more about how we're making this happen. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So, I'm just grateful to be alongside... The next slide. One more. I'm just grateful to be alongside educators like Sandy Sue and Alyssa and all the other Edina teachers that are making such a positive impact on students. And what we wanted to end with was, what is this really doing in terms of the data for our students? We know that the teachers are really engaged, and we want to make sure that it's landing on kids, and it sure is. As you can see in this data, we have the first and second grade fast bridge data, and it's showing how, just from fall to winter, we increased by six and seven percent in the amount of students meeting benchmark. And then, on the right-hand side, this is a chart showing growth from fall to winter, and you can see 80% of our students who are in these classrooms with these teachers who are getting so trained in Letters, achieving that typical or aggressive growth. And so, we're just seeing such a positive impact on students. So, I will close with an acknowledgement of the support of Ed Fund, who's making this happen for teachers and students in Edina. This would not be possible without the work of Kathy Rendelman and our amazing Edina students and staff. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Do any board members have any questions or comments?
As a teacher who was trained 23 years ago, I am so excited to see us doing this work, because if you are an educator, you know that you were not trained this way. And so, this is so critical to literacy. And literacy, like you said, is a foundation for equity. It's a foundation to everything else that goes on in the world. So, I want to say thank you to the teachers and the administrators that are putting in the time, because this is no small ask. And it's great to see that the impact that you are seeing from the classroom is real, and you're here to tell us about that. And I want to thank the administration for making this the priority and saying, this is the work we are standing behind and putting our work behind. And I was also going to say thank you to the Ed Fund, because this is, they were able to secure the funding for this. This is not a cheap thing. And so, that partnership, this is what we talk about. And so, it's really great to see that. And I, last comment, how did you get a classroom of kindergartners to stay still when there's a video camera in the classroom? That's kind of amazing. As I'm watching that, I'm like, you don't see kids running around in the background. They're just doing what they're supposed to do. So, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Regina.
Just a quick comment, because again, this is phenomenal. It's making a difference for each and every one of our students. And I want to tag Member Gable or shout out to the Education Fund. And if anyone is curious, who or what is the Edina Education Fund? It is all of us. Everybody in the community of Edina has the opportunity to support every single student in our school by supporting the Ed Fund. So, the Ed Fund, Edina Give and Go, we have so many phenomenal partnerships in the community, and this is just a testimony to all of the great things that happen when we all work together. So, thank you.
I'm also going to give you guys a big thank you. And Bethany, thank you for your hard work in pushing this out. You may never know the number of students that you are helping their mental health by teaching them this at an early age, right? Like, we know now that kids don't read the way, like you were saying, Karen, that a lot of people were taught. And so, kudos to you. Please know that you are honestly helping students live better lives because of the way that you are meeting their needs where they're at. So, thank you. I appreciate your hard work.
I'm just going to echo what everyone else said and also comment that change is hard, especially this change, when you're fundamentally changing the way people have been taught to teach. I like to tell people, my mom is a reading professor, and she taught the opposite way of how, so it's sort of funny to see the shift. But I am just so thankful and thank you to you four for leading. That's also hard to be a leader, so I really appreciate it. A shout out to, one last shout out to our city, who actually granted us tens of thousands of dollars of COVID recovery money to make this happen. So, there's so many thank yous. So many thank yous to go around, and appreciate you coming to highlight all your hard work. So, thank you. Next on our agenda are hearing from members of the public, and we don't have any requests to speak tonight, so I'll just let the public know. You're welcome to come and speak for three minutes each Monday board meeting. So, if you have something to talk to us about, you can do that next month. We're moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to remove anything from the consent agenda? No? Then, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. We'll now move on to our discussion items. And speaking of literacy, our first discussion item is our comprehensive literacy plan for grades six through 12. I will invite backup Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Bethany Van Osgood, and our Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, Board Directors, colleagues, and community members. The Early Learning Through 12 Comprehensive Literacy Plan has been developed in response to and in alignment with the 2020 to 27 Strategic Plan. Tonight, we are discussing specifically the six through 12 Comprehensive Literacy Plan. This plan defines the unified commitment for secondary ELA programming in Edina, and its implementation success will be measured by the Data Metrics Plan. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Bethany Van Osgood, our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, to provide a high-level overview of the plan, and then turn it over for questions and feedback.
Thank you. Well, thank you for letting me share about the Edina Comprehensive Literacy Plan for grade 612. As you know, this has been co-created with a lot of educators that I get to just stand up here and speak on behalf of, so I just want to give acknowledgement to that, the many middle and high school teachers that have been partnering alongside me with drafting the work that lives in this plan. The Edina staff, I can tell you, they recognize the need for change, and they are definitely leaning in to champion that change. I'm honored to partner with them. As we all know, the landscape of literacy has changed. As we all process the impact of the recent pandemic and digest the new literacy research that's coming out around the science of reader, science of reading, educators and parents, I will say, know that the way we have always done things will not, no longer be the same moving forward. And so, we know that our students and staff both have different needs than they've ever had before. And so, this is a 40-page comprehensive literacy plan that is our initial response to respond to these needs. And I use the word "initial" on purpose, because this work will take time. This is an intentionality and a unified commitment, as Jody mentioned, to see this really live in our schools and classrooms. And the good news is that Edina already has a really strong foundation in literacy. You heard about all of the initiatives with the pre-K5 plan. That work has already begun, and that's already becoming, coming to fruition. And so, now we just build on to that for our secondary students. So, at the board workshop meeting, you all had some questions specific to measurement and monitoring. And so, one add has been a link to the Comprehensive Literacy Data Metrics Plan that just details further how we will measure each piece, when that will happen, with whom, and how we will use that data. But also, to Jody's point, many of these data points will be monitored within that data metrics plan. So, I just wanted to call out that add. So, you know, this is a big plan with lofty goals, and if we imagine what literacy programming will look like in 2027 following this plan, I believe it's pretty exciting. I picture teachers who are supported with meaningful professional development and transformational tools to support students at all levels. I picture school systems who have a well-oiled data literacy enrichment and intervention supports that function seamlessly. And I picture students who are confident, successful, joyful, and empowered by literacy. That's the future that I imagine with this plan. It'll be hard work, and it will be worth it. And I just will sum up with a Picasso quote that I came across as I was planning this evening. "Our goals can only be reached through a vehicle of a plan, in which we must fervently believe and upon we much vigorously act. There is no other route to success." And with that, I open up for questions.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have questions or comments? Director Shaw?
Yep. Thank you for, there was so much information in here, so thank you, Bethany and team, for that. So, one of the things that I struggled with when reading through this and reading through it again, and then reading through it again today, was where in the plan are we identifying what we currently are doing that isn't working, right? Like, and I'm not, I just want to make sure people understand that something isn't working, otherwise our scores wouldn't reflect what they are, and also then, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing, right? So, there are students whose needs are not being met. So, what I'm struggling to kind of understand is, I see the information in there about our ML students and strategies that we need to do to meet their needs, and I am so thrilled to see that. But I'm also struggling to see where we're identifying these needs for change, right? The only thing that I'm able to see is, you know, plans for MTSS strategies, but what about our everyday students in classrooms, right? We know that we are going to have students who are coming from a different environment in elementary and middle when they get to, or, you know, elementary into middle and then into high school. They will have had a different structure of literacy teaching, and I have worry that we will not be meeting them with what they need in order to thrive, and not just be where they're at, right? I want to see them flourish, right? I look at other districts who have these massively compelling offerings to students, and it is hard for me to not figure out where in the plan... And it is hard for me to not figure out where in the plan that we are considering options like that for students and where we are considering really offering students not just a chance to be at grade level, but if their learning needs are different, to just excel, right? And so, it may be living in here, and I'm not seeing it. But like I said, I just feel like sometimes you can't, sometimes if you're not honest with what needs to be done, then the work to, to make it happen isn't as meaningful.
Right. I heard two really good questions there. How are we going to know what the needs of students are? And then, what's the plan to really meet them where they're at? And so, the, the one thing that I would offer is that with, so I've been in education now 23 years and, or, or something like that. And it is a constant job to identify needs and respond to those needs. And the pandemic has created a different, a different game for us. And so, we are in a place of finding our footing. And I would say that with the implementation of FastBridge, that is going to be done three times a year. And so, and that hasn't been done in our middle schools or our high school yet. And so, with six, eight, six, nine, when we're talking about that, it is, I always do this, it's plan, do, study, act. It's a constant cycle of identifying where they're at, which, again, having been in education for a very long time with multiple screening measures, FastBridge is amazing at helping us identify need and then helping us identify the intentional action or instructional match. And so, it is not the be-all, end-all, but it is an amazing starting point. And new students coming in, our current students coming in, always have evolving needs. And so, getting that data point three times a year really does provide that consistent, and, and we're working to build that data literacy, right? We need to be able to build in other assessments and that as well. But that screening is that overall look that really helps us to know which students need a closer look. And from there, then, we have the diagnostics. We know that. And we know that along with this plan, this is really new for secondary teachers. This is really new. And so, the professional development required along this that we're really looking into, the teachers are very eager for that, I can tell you that. And so, I will also say that we are going to be looking at, at tools to support that, right? So, we know that there's embedded interventions within that. But when you think about the MTSS system, tier one is all students. We have to think about what's happening for all students. And then, in addition to that, students who need more, we've really been focusing on tier one right now, just thinking about what, what is the data telling us in terms of how effective our programming is and what does research tell us should be happening? So, all last year, we really did spend time with the team, deepen data, deepen research, deepen current reality. And so, there are links in there to that work around their data, their current, current that would be under, it would be towards the end, around the work that's been happening. So, I just want to respond to that in the sense that we don't have all the answers, of course. And I said, this is an initial plan as intended, because we will always need to be modifying as we move forward. But the data that's been put in place this year has already proven to be so impactful. So, I hope that somewhat answers a little bit of your questions. I know there's a lot more to that. But again, like I said, you know, we can, we can more easily steer a bicycle when it's rolling. And so, we know that we will continually come back to that each and every time, right? Each and every testing season, each and every opportunity to look at what our students need and the programming that would be a best fit for them.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah.
And where in the timeline would any sort of evaluation of our current course offerings lie?
So, we did a current reality scan and data, data dive last year. And we identified the need for some, so, one thing that's interesting in my role is that I pulled teachers together from multiple buildings. And so, we had that time to come together to look and see, what is our consistent programming? And that's really what our job has been the last few years, is to, last few years, the last two years, year and a half, is to identify what's happening in each building, where are things different that need to be aligned, where are things that are working that need to be replicated, right? So, that's really been the conversation. So, it, it is fuzzy right now, because we're working through that process. But what we know is that with our data and with our current programming, with some gaps and inconsistencies, we need to level the playing field and come to that consistent approach. And that's what really we're working on in this exploration phase. So, I don't know if that, if that helps.
That's helpful.
Timeline for that, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Stanley, sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Stanley.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, you remember that, gosh, it was probably January when we brought, or maybe December, the new courses that we brought. And so, the initial start with providing supports in addition to, I mean, those supports cannot be in place without the FastBridge and utilizing that data, is that course that we brought, where we're starting to help support. And then, in addition to that, as Bethany's saying, the next phase is to look at the courses that are there, determine what's kept, what needs to be modified, what might we sunset, if necessary, to make sure, when she talks about that tier one, that is that ELA class. That's that ELA class that every ninth grader, every 10th grader, every, you know, 11th grader is taking, to make sure that every educator who's providing that is well-equipped to provide that as well, that instruction as well.
Thank you. That, that was the piece that I just wanted to hear, that we were going to be, I, I'm very, I remember the course that we put in place. I just, I wanted to hear that we would also then be evaluating the existing classes. So, thank you.
And some of that, Janie, goes to some of the questions I've been asking about the curriculum rollout, because I think part of that will take place during that process. And I would hope that during the curriculum rollout, that we would be evaluating our courses and how we're going to implement the coursework and meet all students' needs and then come to the board with classes. So.
That was my hope, too. I just needed to hear it. So, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Thank you for this robust 50-page document. There's a lot of work that's been put into that. And a little bit off of what Janie's saying, just the awareness that as we have shifted to letters in our elementary, we have a whole raft of kids that are coming through that didn't have that. And so, until we can say those kids that are getting it now have made to, to high school, we will have some kids that haven't been taught the 44 sounds. And so, and never were taught that way. So, we might have some gaps and just, you know, whether that new ninth-grade course, there's probably going to be some kids that don't qualify that, for that, but aren't quite meeting their potential, because they were never taught the sounds and how to, to read as well as they could. So, just that awareness, and I know, you know that, but just wanted to make sure we're, we're stating that, that there'll be students that probably are kind of falling through for a little bit.
Yeah. And, and quite honestly, we're not waiting, we're not waiting for those, for that professional development to just move forward from our third graders on up. Like, we're intentionally building in professional development right now to help our ninth-grade teachers respond to fluency gaps or phonics gaps or phonics needs, too, so that we, it's new. It's, it's new information, and it's taking some really dedicated time and intentionality. But the teachers are really rolling up their sleeves and, and using that data, so, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Thanks for your work on that.
Regina?
Oh, sorry. But since you asked. No, I just want to say thank you. I, I've had the opportunity to go a little more deeply with this in our Teaching and Learning Committee discussion you presented in work session. I am grateful to you and want to extend gratitude of the board to all of our staff who are involved with this professional development. They're, they already have a full schedule. So, just to acknowledge that they are teaching full-time, doing amazing work, and taking on the new learning, which is exciting. It's a fabulous direction, but I just want to extend that appreciation at all levels.
Absolutely. Yep. Any other comments from board members? Dr. Stanley?
The last thing I, I want to thank teachers as well, and the last thing I want to say is, if you, unless you earned your teaching licensure or certificate before 1975, you did not learn the science of reading. And so, that pretty much means that any of our teachers who are in our system right now, were not trained on this, back then, it was probably called phonics, but were not trained on this idea of the science of reading. And so, this is very new. It's incredibly new and significantly new for our secondary teachers. And so, I echo the same. Our teachers are learning differently. They are also incredibly highly qualified and well-positioned, just like Sue and Alyssa are, to take in this new information and make an impact for our students, and I'm, I'm incredibly proud of them.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley, and thank you both.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is our Talent Development Universal Screener Recommendation. Presenters are Jody D. St. Hubert, Director of Teaching and Learning, Leanne, is it Feely? I apologize, I am not great with pronunciation. Student Support Services Continuous Improvement Specialist, MTSS, and MTS S Coordinator. And Deborah Richards, Talent Development Coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to see if this, where do we point this to move it? Oh, look, I got it. Okay, okay. It was this one. That one? Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you for giving me a moment just to check out the technology and get set here. Good evening again. Thank you for letting us be here to talk about our Talent Development Universal Screener Recommendation, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, board members. When the 2022-23 Assessment Calendar was approved, Teaching and Learning was asked to form a Talent Development Universal Design Team to research and review if any changes needed to be made in our current or the assessment calendar in relation to talent development at the time. So, the team, a team was formed, and we had amazing leadership from Deb Richards and Leanne Feely, as we just discussed their roles. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the two of them to give us a high-level overview of the committee work and the recommendations, and then turn it over to all of you for questions and feedback.
So, when we think about a Talent Development Universal Screener, what we're really talking about is a way for us to really discover exceptional potential, as well as uncovering some of the hidden talents that we might not find in, in achievement measure. It's considered a best practice in the field of gifted education and strong recommendations that a Talent Development Universal Screener be given by the end of second grade.
Go to the next slide, please. And so, our, our team that we pulled together, as Jody mentioned, to look at what, what the screener would be, it was grounded in implementation science and really was part of that exploration phase where we were assessing the needs, assessing the fit and feasibility, and looking at different things, you know, based on this recommendation and approval. Then, we'd move into the installation phase next, next school year. Next slide.
So, our team consisted of a variety of different educators in different roles, from classroom teachers to talent development staff, to principals, to administrators, to psychologists. We really wanted to get multiple perspectives as we were looking at what is the best Talent Development Universal Screener. In addition to this district assessment team, we also, we also gathered feedback from our parent advisory team. And so, that is comprised of two or more parent representatives, along with our talent development staff. And they were able to provide some feedback. Janie Shaw is our board rep that's on that committee, and some of that information was shared with her as well. Next slide. It was important, as we conducted this, this investigation, that it was grounded in research and best practice. We, our literature review relied heavily on three different documents. One was the Colorado Department of Education, their Gifted Identification Guidebook. You might wonder why we selected Colorado. And it's really because Colorado is mandated services, or the state mandates gifted and talented services in the state, and it's also under special services. So, they have a lot of research and a lot of really good information for us to draw from. Also, we looked at the National Association for Gifted Children, and we also looked at what the Minnesota Department of Education had to say.
Next slide. So, just a really quick overview of the meetings that we had. So, we had several meetings from November to February. Started with grounding and introduction to the process, as I mentioned, rooted in implementation science and research and best practice. We then dug into defining what our current reality was with assessment for talent development, kind of doing a SWOT analysis, what are the strengths and weaknesses of that, opportunities and threats, getting stakeholder feedback. In December, we dove into the literature that Deb just mentioned and looked at utilizing an affinity process to create a rubric that we would use then to look at different tools and how they would best fit our needs. Then, we had the vendors, or the vendors come in and assess those tools. Once we, you know, utilized our rubric to land on that the COGAT would be part of our recommendation, we then again circled around to develop what would be the protocol for the use of that assessment based on literature and best practice. And then, determining, you know, whether we had everything that we needed within our TD portfolio to ensure that we were identifying students appropriately for services. And lastly, in February, bringing forward that recommendation and making sure we were aligned with the essential elements of cultural proficiency and our assessment accountability. Next slide. This is just an example of the rubric that we use to evaluate the tools. And so, you can see that there was kind of three big headings when we came together through the affinity process around characteristics of the tool, administration, and then whether the tool was culturally responsive. The two tools that we looked at was the PETS curriculum, which is what we are currently using in the system as our Talent Development Universal Screener. And then, we also looked at the COGAT, which is, you know, was a tool that came recommended through many of the, the literature reviews. And as you can see there, the totals, PETS received kind of 18.78 overall, with the COGAT receiving 43.22 overall, with the total being 54. So, you can see how the COGAT rated highly among the, you know, characteristics that we were looking for in a talent development screening tool. Go ahead, and then the next slide. So, with that, as I mentioned, we then pulled our team together to say, okay, how will this actually look when we were to move into initial, you know, implementation? And so, the recommendations from the team are that the universal screening would be the COGAT full battery, starting in the fall of 2023, with all second-grade students. It would be administered by our Curiosity Lab teachers, which are our talent development teachers, so that we would be sure to increase the rate of reliability and diminish the responsibility for our grade-two teachers. As you heard, they have much going on with letters and with other things. So, our, we'll lean into our TD teachers to help administer the COGAT. Scores, then, will be reviewed as part of a team. We really want there to be a team around this, looking at how does this fit in with the other pieces of data that we're seeing with our students? Because we want to be sure we're not only using these scores as part of our comprehensive talent development screening portfolio, but we want to make sure that we're utilizing it to determine strength areas for all of our students and matching, you know, the right instructional matches with all of our students and using those strengths to propel those students forward. And then, following the use of the COGAT in second grade, which again is the recommendation for fall of '23, we would consider adding the COGAT at the end of fourth grade as well, based on how things went with the second grade rollout. Next slide, please. And then, just a really quick, brief overview of what the COGAT is. COGAT stands for Cognitive Abilities Test. It's a norm-referenced cognitive instrument that's designed to measure students' reasoning ability. So, it's not measuring specific academic knowledge and content areas like reading and math. It's at that reasoning ability divided into three batteries, looking at verbal, quantitative, and nonverbal reasoning. Next slide.
So, with every new initiative, we know how important that communication plan is. And so, although you will not be taking action on this until next month, we want to be sure that we are ready and to communicate with all of our elementary teachers to know that this is something that we will be doing in the fall. There'll be some specific messaging to grade-two teachers. We've learned that it's always good to prevent, to provide communication in, in different ways. And so, I think that personal interaction with second-grade teachers will be really important, just to get some of their feedback about this as we move forward. All of our elementary families will need to have some type of communication around the use of the COGAT. Again, grade-two families will also, sorry, next slide. Second-grade families will also want to know that their, their child's going to be taking this exam and, and why it's important. And then, again, that personal conversation, we are thinking of having the second-grade teachers share at parent conferences, kind of the strength areas. And if they do any student-led, led conferences, it'd be really nice if the students could share with their parents what their strength is, because it's really important. because it's really important that students also are, that they took this assessment not just as another data point in a talent development portfolio, but this was really to discover what their strength area is, and that is the why. And then, again, that Talent Development Assessment Team. There's a lot of different staff that work with students, maybe, you know, with our ML staff or learning specialists. And sometimes they might not see the child in the same way that this, that this assessment will provide. So again, just allowing teachers who work with all kids to have different perspectives on kids. Next slide, please. So what are our next steps? Want to start with the communication plan this spring. We want to administer the COGAT in the fall, right after the FAST assessment is given. Then we want to review the scores to support strong instructional matches for all students in all setting. So we certainly want to use it as an additional identification component in the Curiosity Lab for accelerated math, extended reading. And then, like Leanne mentioned, we do then want to measure the effectiveness. Are we really, is this tool able to provide a way for us to identify strengths in all kids and give us a better measure of potential and unhidden talent? Our goals are really threefold. To identify strength areas for each and every grade-two student, to highlight exceptional potential and hidden talent in all populations, and then to enhance the talent development identification portfolio.
You can go to the next slide.
You can go to the next two slides.
One more. Thank you.
How are we gonna measure this? So we're gonna measure it to make sure that students and caretakers are able to identify what their child's strength area is. That's gonna happen through family conversations and communication, written communication. We want to make sure that parents are provided with some suggestions to have their child participate in activities that strengthen their talent area. We also want to see a shift in mindset. We really would like the school culture to reflect a talent development mindset where we're looking, yes, at kids that might need some additional support, but also what their strength area is, and looking at this from a positive lens. We'll want to provide some professional development to help teachers find ways to kind of help them capitalize on student talent areas. And then, important, we want to increase the number of students from historically underserved populations participating and finding success in talent development programming. And we're gonna measure this through the Data Metrics Plan. There we have it.
That will open it up for questions.
Thank you, thank you, Board Members. Questions? Comments?
Just a really quick reinforcing statement. In the slides a few minutes ago, when you talked about how it would roll out, this is just an additional tool for, to figure out what the strengths are, to go from that. It's not the end-all, be-all, the only thing that's gonna be used, so-and-so-f. I just want to make sure that everyone in the community understands. This is an added measurement tool to help us in that assessment process for all students to figure out their strengths. Thank you.
Go, Janie.
I'll go. I know we had a little bit of discussion at the work session. It was brought up about implementation timeline. And I just, first of all, I want to say I recognize the intentionality behind bringing other members of the school community in to help support this work sooner rather than later. And so I appreciate that. It sounds like the main role of the classroom teacher at this time would be to receive the information and to start the journey of kind of learning how to use that information. So I, I'm a huge fan of the COGAT. I think you guys have all heard me say that. I'm thrilled that it's back. I'm thrilled that it's an opportunity, you know, sometimes assessment, more times than not, is looking for deficits, right? Where this is really just looking for strengths. And I think any child who can be told what a strength is, that they can hold on to it and grow from it, even though we know we won't be at like full capacity from day one on, on how to utilize it. I, I am totally in favor of those children having that information sooner rather than later. So thank you so much for the hard work on this. I am more than thrilled at everything you've put into it and the opportunity for our students to, to gain strength from this. So thank you.
Yeah, going, I guess, more about what Director Shaw was talking about. Could you speak to, I, I think more about the role of the classroom teacher? Because that's, that's my main concern, is rolling out the letters training and the science curriculum, and then asking our second-grade teachers. I know there's a Professional Development Day. So I think the question I had was around, are we asking them to focus on too many different things in one year?
That's a really good question. And I think the bulk of the professional development will occur this summer with my team. Riverside has some really nice learning modules that we can go through in terms of being really clear on the administration of it. I think you're absolutely right. At this point in time, what we're gonna do is meet with teachers and provide them a list of the strengths of their students. We will ask them probably to share with their families at conference time. And then, from there, I don't envision this being an isolated additional professional development. I look at it when we're looking at mystery science or when we're looking at literacy and we're creating units, STEAM units. Like, how do we build in activities for kids with their strength area? So like, if you are, if you have a high nonverbal, right? You want kids to have the opportunity to demonstrate their learning in some visual format. Or you're gonna want to present your material, your content, in a way that's visual for those. So it's more, hopefully, it's not going to be an add-on, but it will be embedded in some of those big rocks that we have. And I think just through, I plan to visit their PLCs and try to get a, a feel for where they're at. And I think we're just gonna have to monitor and adjust that. If we just feel like next year is not the year to do some of the Riverside training, or I, I think we're gonna be really mindful of that.
I would also love to just add a little bit of how all of this is coming together, because it's a really important question. We have staff that are in letters. They're finishing units one and two this year, but will be jumping into units three and four. And we are working really hard to provide opportunities for choice for staff of when they are able to do that. So there'll be some summer opportunities, some school year opportunities, so staff can weigh where they're at with what works best. And then, I think it's really important for me just to emphasize that the science for K-2 is in initial implementation, installation. So it's not the full, we're not at the implementation. So in the beginning of the year, all the way most likely through February, it will be a choice for our K-2 teachers to engage in using mystery science at the level of fidelity that we'll, we'll shift to. So they'll be gaining some professional development on Professional Development Days, but there will be no hard requirement that we're jumping into mystery science as a curriculum. So definitely recognizing how many things are on all of our plates right now and being cognizant of how we present that and support teachers with that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think that, to your point, if you could be cognizant of that. And I think we, I personally think we need to pace appropriately. I think the flip side of that, I think it could, could also be overwhelming for families, because we're trying to get them to digest the importance of FAST Bridge and what that means from a testing perspective. I think it could also be information overload. So I'm 100% in favor of all of this and appreciate, I'm super excited about it. I just think it's so important how we pace the rollout to integrate it. The change management portion is the only piece that I'm a little concerned about, so. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that forward. It's important we continue to partner on that and collaborate on it.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Okay, thank you. Next up is our Policy Committee. And, oh, my computer died for a minute, so I was making that up off the top of my head. Next up is Student Travel. Oh, and you still have Director D. St. Hubert to talk about trips. Trips to Japan and France.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and Board Members, colleagues and community members. Tonight, we have two travel experiences in front of us for discussion. The first is a Career and Technology Department travel experience to Japan that would occur in June of 2024. And then the second is a France Student Exchange. And although the CTE experience, the Career and Tech Experience is new, the France Student Exchange is something that has been a part of our system before. So the first exchange with this high school, France, Edina High School partnership, was created in 19, in, in 2019 and 2020. That seems like forever ago. The proposed exchange dates for this experience would have French students coming to us in the upcoming fall. And then our students would be traveling later in the year. We are still working, the later in the year would be kind of towards the end of February and beginning of March of 2024. We are still working with this team and determining the exact dates and trying to narrow down the number of days that students would be out of school. And we're also, in partnering with the Board, still working through what travel organization will work with, just so once we have, if we have Board approval, that we can create the experience at the most affordable cost for families. So there's lots of investigations going on. However, both, both of the proposals are brought forward with Policy 538 in mind and all the different components that we are working through with 538. And they're also brought forward with a link in the report that gives an overview of all the travel experience that, experiences that are happening, not only at the high school, but also the elementary through middle school through high school that are both international as well as here in the United States. So you can see the, the whole picture of travel that's coming up for the 23-24 school year. Not only like where students are traveling, but the times of the year that students are traveling, as well as the departments that they're falling under for the educational experience. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions and feedback.
Board Members, questions, feedback? Director Shaw?
My feedback is that Japan trip is amazing, and our students are so, so lucky. So I'm, love seeing that, so thank you.
Director Gable? I think that's it. Great, thank you very much.
Fabulous, thank you.
Now we're moving on to our Policy Committee. We have three po... Three, yes, I was right. Three policies to discuss. I'll turn it over to Director Neville, our Policy Committee Chair.
All right, thank you, Chair Allenberg. With the three policies, they are all part of our regular review cycle. We have Policy 206 regarding public hearings and 2700 series policies. We're going to begin with 206. And I've invited Director Karen Gable to share a little background as she has been involved with a lot of the research on 206. So I want to thank her for that and invite her to give an overview.
Thank you, Director Neville. As stated, one of the policies up for discussion tonight is Policy 206, which is public hearings and public participation in school board meetings and data privacy considerations. And as the policy states, the school board recognizes the importance and the value of hearing from the community. And this policy outlines the procedures around public participation in these meetings. So as Director Neville talked about, this is part of the 200 series, which is one of the series that we've looked at this year. If you've been following along, we've looked at the 100s. We are, have looked at the 200s and the 700s as part of our review cycle. For the Board and the, and the Public's background, the Policy Committee consulted Minnesota School Board Association. Our own district's legal counsel reviewed more than half a dozen metro-area school districts' policies 206 and had one-on-one conversations with several school boards who had recently reviewed their policy 206. What you see in your Board packet are recommendations from the Policy Committee based on the information that we gathered from the previously mentioned sources. So one particular line that I would draw, like to draw people's attention to is at the top of page 206.3. And you will note that the word "address" is struck from our policy here. And when we were looking at MSBA's model policy, they did not have "address" included in that. And so initially, we struck it from ours. But after our Policy Committee met, we received further clarification that there is no legal recommendation to strike it, meaning that we can ask participants for that information. So we can talk about that. There are also a few editing errors that we've caught that we will make sure we clean up. But if you want to make sure we, we, if you want to point them out, we'll make sure we get them all. And so our goal this evening with this policy is really, because it is a board-driven policy, to hear from you. What do you think about these recommendations in here? We will certainly take them back to Policy Committee and for further discussion.
Board Members? Yes?
I just have one quick question. Thorough, love the updates, very well done. If you had to summarize the actual additive, things that were then done, did they actually change anything about how we've actually operated under this provision?
So when you're looking at the policy, the blue is, are the changes. When you look, if you've been a public member that's come and spoken to us, you are not going to notice a big difference. But this is put in place as we've, a lot of districts in the last couple of years have had to review this policy and just make sure that we are keeping it a safe environment for people to come and speak to us, that we have procedures that protect our staff members in terms of their information being shared. So a lot of what you hear, see here is just more procedural, and you wouldn't necessarily note much difference. Would you agree with that, Director Neville?
I do. Yeah, and so part of our clarification of language is reflecting current practice, but as well as the updates to cite statute as statute adjusts, title of statute adjusts, the language adjusts. But it is in alignment with our current procedure.
Thank you. I, I know that not everyone will probably read it all the way clearly from that standpoint, but that I'm glad that that's exactly what we're trying to do. So I'm full support of what the additions have been made. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, I concur that I thought the additions that were made as far as procedural changes or additions were, were really well done. I would ask that the word "address" not be struck through. I would like to include, continue to include that in our regular process as we have in the past. I think it's an important one that we maintain.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about 206?
I have quite a few. I was just looking for other people, too. I was wondering, a couple of mine are grammatical. I'm just gonna assume that you guys have caught those. So there's a couple substantive questions I was wondering. I was wondering about your inclusion of the word "students" under three? And if you could explain that, and not that I am opposed to that, but why only adding "students"?
So this was actually a recommendation from a neighboring district that had in their policy. And when I think about, when we as a, we brought it to the Policy Committee. As a district, we've really prioritized trying to make sure that students know that they are part of the system and that their voice matters. And so that was an addition that, you know, the school board was, it used to read, "The school board will strive to give all community members an opportunity to be heard." We felt like it was important to put that in there, including students, because we want them to know that their voice is important when, when they speak to us, whether they're voters or not. Their voice is an important part of this process.
My only hesitation and not, it's not that I don't think we should include students. I think when you add only one group, the natural question is, why aren't you encouraging other groups to come? And so why aren't we, we've also talked about the importance of educator voices. Why aren't we saying, "We'll strive to give all community members, including students, educators, and staff members"? I think that, I just personally have always erred on the side of you either are vague or you include every single person that you want to encourage to come. And so that's, that's my only hesitation about only calling out students.
Sure. So a clarification question on that, because I hear what you're saying, and I, I agree with that. Would you then strike students as well as community members?
No, I think we have to talk about community members. I think when you, this, I mean, are... our, I think our obligation, we strive to give all stakeholders an opportunity to come.
So should we change it to that? Should we say, "The school board will strive to give all stakeholders an opportunity and take out community"? Would that work better?
I like that.
I would only comment that that's what we've been talking about in terms of, from a governance standpoint, and the stakeholder liaison, all the things that we've been doing on the work side. Stakeholders is the term that we've used, and then we did provide definition of what that was. But for this purpose, stakeholders probably goes along, is aligned with where we were going with that.
And the, I mean, and we could potentially include, like, by stakeholders, we want to encourage student, if you guys want to go that route, I am only concerned about isolating only students. And are we sending a message that?
I went back and forth on that.
Yeah.
Didn't say parents, caregivers.
Right, right.
But I, I actually like the inclusiveness of the word stakeholders.
Yeah.
So stakeholders, do stakeholders, I have that down. I appreciate the feedback, and I think that what I'm hearing in general is a desire of the board to not exclude, to make sure that we are inclusive, and recognizing that by naming a particular group and not naming another one, it can be exclusive. So I think it's helpful feedback, and we'll take that back to the committee and take a look at either stakeholder or another term that would be the most broadly defined.
Thank you.
And welcoming.
I really appreciate that. My second question is under B, number one. It says, "School board meetings are not an appropriate venue during which to file a specific complaint against a staff member or the school district." Totally agree with the language and the intent of what you're trying to put in there. My question is, is it going to be confusing to the general public who don't, they might define a complaint as the, the reason that they're coming here is to complain about, "I don't like the lunches at Valley View", not how we define complaint from a policy perspective, which is, I believe, what you were trying to define in number one, which is that if you have a complaint, you need to follow the complaint process. And so I was just concerned about the way it read that someone could read that and say, "We don't want people to come here and complain about the school district."
Would you change it to that? Formal, instead of specific to formal?
A formal complaint?
Or to take out school district? Because really, A, B, and C, D underneath them are about individuals.
Yeah.
What was, Janie, what was your recommendation?
Well, I was thinking, file a formal complaint, but is the word file the right word?
Well, file would be in alignment with Policy 104, which is where people are directed for that particular action. But again, what I'm hearing, just to make sure that this is accurate, is making sure that we differentiate clearly between a formal complaint process, particularly one that is against an individual, a particular staff member, or a formal complaint against the school district. So specific against a staff member would be in alignment with policy. That's not part of what public comment may be used for. But formal complaint against the school district, I think that that is helpful for us to take back to the community, see if there's additional research that we need to be aware of in terms of whether there is a, a legal ramification or meaning behind one term versus another.
I think that's a good idea.
But making sure that complaints, I think possibly the definition of that section is misleading.
I, I agree. I didn't want someone to read that and think we're dissuading people from coming and saying negative stuff about the district, which is the whole point why sometimes we have the open forum.
People can also say nice things, but yes. But thank you. I think there may be some confusion just with that title of complaints that's worth reviewing as well. So thank you.
I appreciate that.
So Regina, did you capture that?
I did. Thank you. Yes.
And the only other small, it's just a really small thing, but under C, open forum, the last sentence is periodically closed meetings may be held where attendance and speaking opportunities are not allowed. I would like to add, like periodically per Minnesota state law, just to really reinforce that we're not just closing meetings where people can't speak. So.
Thank you. Periodically as per, and we will cite the appropriate reference. Thank you.
Thank you all for the feedback. This was really great, beneficial.
I don't have comments on any other policy.
But we will introduce them, though. Anything else on 206? Okay, thank you. And we are also looking at 700s. I want to express my gratitude to Business Director, Director of Business Services Mert Woodard and his team for taking a look at 700s. Tonight, we're looking at 710, Acceptance and Use of Grant Funding, and 712, Signing of Checks on Behalf of the District. And Mert, thank you for giving us an overview of any adjustments to these two policies.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, School Board Directors, and Superintendent Stanley. For Policy 710, the Acceptance and Use of Grant Funding, there were really three minor updates, the first of which was to the definition of grant itself. The current reading of that definition may lead some to align that to donations, and we want to be clear about what we think is a grant in this district. So we updated the language to reflect that and add clarity. The second would be an update to the language in Section 4, Paragraph A, where we replace the Director of Teaching and Learning with the Director of Business Services and Director of Community Education and Strategic Partnerships. That change was made because all grants have a financial component and a partnership component, but not all grants have a curriculum component. So we thought that those two particular staff members would be well served to carry out this policy. The third change would be the added appendice, which describes the preferred method of grant application. That was designed by Dr. Ann Leland, who did a great job. And so we thought that would help any potential grant procurers in the future. Any questions regarding 710?
I just wanted to say thank you to the two of you for adding that appendix. When we were in policy, we asked for that, and you delivered that as really thorough and hopefully will be a good resource. So thank you.
Policy 712, Signing of Checks, Checks on Behalf of the District. There were no changes made to this policy, with the exception of a couple of style updates regarding our legal name and the title of the policy.
Any questions? Any questions about 712? All right. Thank you, Mert.
Thank you, Mert. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're now, we are now going to move on to our action items, and our first action item is the ratification of sale for general obligation capital notes. Do I have a motion to approve the sale of general obligation, general obligation of capital notes and facilities maintenance bonds, Series 2023A?
So moved.
Is there? Oh, wow, that was very fast. Thank you. It was Janie and Michael. I'd like to welcome Mert Woodard again and Jody Zesba. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, members of the board. I'll just point out one minor typo that was made on the agenda sheet in the first sentence of the background paragraph. That should read February 13, 2023, instead of 2022. At that meeting, the school board authorized myself, the municipal advisors, and other board officers to take and execute the sale of the 2023 general obligation bonds, $7,035,000 of par value, which are used to finance a portion of the district's long-term facilities maintenance plan, which you adopt on an annual basis. A portion of that issuance is also to finance the purchase of pupil transportation vehicles and technology devices. The sale is contingent on the true interest cost of the award bidder being at 4% or lower. I'm pleased to share some great news about that, which Jody will share in just a minute. Before I do, I just want to remind the board and the public that as part of that process, the district underwent a credit rating call with Moody's Investor Services. Very pleased to report that they elected to maintain our underlying AAA rating, which is the highest possible rating. It's always great news, so congratulations. And with no further ado, Jody Zesba from Ellers.
Great. Thank you, Mert.
So I will just touch on a few items within our Sale Day report, and then if you have any questions on that or the ratifying resolution, I'll be happy to respond to those, too. So you'll see on the inside front cover, the first page of our report, the purpose, as Mert just described, the two purposes with the deferred maintenance projects, as well as the capital notes for the buses and technology devices. And as Mert mentioned, that rating is listed next with your underlying rating at the highest rating that Moody's assigns at AAA. You are one of only three school districts in the state of Minnesota that has that rating. So also, Izzet and Minnetoka are the other two. I get asked that frequently. And then you do participate in the Minnesota State Credit Enhancement Rating. For most districts, that's a higher rating than what they have. It's a lower rating for you, but it still gives the investors additional security in the debt that you're issuing. There's no cost to participate in that program, so you always participate in that program also. You receive seven bids, which is fantastic. So we've been getting a lot of demand for municipal bonds, and we've seen rates come down. So at the time that I was here presenting our pre-sale estimates, rates were going up. And so we had some cushion added in, and so you'll see that the low bid is a 2.90%. So a little under 3%, which was great to see. We have a summary of sale results table, and then some notes there showing that we had an estimate of 3.7% when we presented the pre-sale report to you on March 13. So nice to see that come in well below that. And with an additional premium that we got from the winning underwriter, as well as that favorable interest rate, you'll have about $420,000 more for projects than we were expecting. So that's really great news, too. The true interest cost rate, again, was well below the parameter that the board established at 4%. So you've already had two individuals sign the proposal form on your behalf. And so that is the reason that you're ratifying tonight. So that's the action that we're looking for tonight. I'll quickly touch on the attachments that we have to the Sale Day report. The first is the bid tab. So Hilltop Securities from Dallas, Texas, was the low bidder at 2.90%, followed closely behind from, by BOK out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at a 2.92. And then Raymond James and Associates out of St. Petersburg, Florida, Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis, Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Key Bank from Cleveland, Ohio, and then Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, at a 3.07. So lots of interest from throughout the country, which is great to see. And then the next financial schedules are the exact same financial schedules that we had in the pre-sale report, which we talked about in March. They're just updated with sale results now. So that first schedule is the sources and uses schedule, includes a higher premium and a little bit more for project costs, as we just talked about. The debt service schedule is labeled Attachments, Page 4 at the bottom. The capital notes portion of the issue is Attachments, Page 5. That actually has a true interest cost rate of just a little over 2%. So 2.09% is the rate on that portion of this debt issue, because those are the shorter maturities. Your facilities maintenance bonds, then, have an interest rate of about 2.96, and that schedule is shown on Page 6. The detailed plan that we are always monitoring for you, that is in about size four font, so on Page 7, I'm not going to point you to too many numbers on there, just direct your attention to the far right-hand tax rate column, because we're always monitoring that to keep your tax rate level, or with some step downs, so that you have some future capacity for any needs that you need to meet. So on Attachments, Page 8, that is the chart with the debt service tax rates, and you can see that we are keeping that tax rate very level with, again, some step downs in the future. And this provides the information related to the majority of your levies. So it has all your debt service levies, your lease levy, your capital project levy that finances technology, that's a voter-approved levy. So not all of your levies are shown on this schedule, but a majority of them are. And then, next, you will have two rating reports that Moody's issued. So the first report that they issue is their press release, and that is labeled Attachments, Page 9 at the bottom. And I'll just draw your attention to the ratings rationale, where they say the AAA issue rating reflects the district's growing local economy and full value per capita in the Twin Cities metro area, very strong adjusted resident income, strong competitive position supporting relatively stable enrollment, and above-average leverage from debt and pensions paired with moderate fixed costs. While cash is strong, fund balance is a little low compared to peers in the rating, in your rating category, and they've mentioned that before, and your debt and leverage number is generally elevated because of your TRA pension amount. So that report then continues on through Attachments, Page 14, and then they provide you with a more detailed credit opinion, starting on Attachments, Page 15. And thanks to both Mert and Dr. Stanley for participating in the rating process. They were very well-prepared, represented you extremely well, and that was very critical to maintaining your AAA rating. So we appreciate all of their efforts and assistance as part of that rating process, too.
Just want to add one quick thing. Jody earlier referenced the, the capital note portion of the issuance yielded a true interest cost of about 2.09%. You'll remember that this strategy is relatively new for the district, and the, the private debt that we had shopped around, we're offering rates north of five. So that strategy has paid dividends, and so thank you for the Finance Committee for trusting the administration to pull that off.
Thank you. That's amazing. Thank you. Board members, questions?
I just have one quick question. From the credit rating standpoint, that process, how often do we have to go through? What's the time cycle for every time we have to do that?
So anytime you issue debt, they will want to talk with you. Your rating, once it's set, is always under their surveillance, though. So at any point in time, generally once they get your audit report, every year, they take a look at things, and they'll initiate a process if they want to talk to you about any changes or anything that they're seeing. So for sure, each time you issue debt, you go through the rating process, but they can initiate a call or a process with you at any point in time while your ratings are outstanding.
Thank you. And by the way, I think the Finance Committee is going to be pretty happy when they see that rate, considering what we talked about at the last meeting. So that's awesome. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank the Finance Committee and Dr. Stanley and Mert for the outstanding work you've done on our finances and keeping your AAA credit rating. Big, big deal. So thank you. We will now vote to approve the fiscal year 2025 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, that's the next topic, sorry. We will now vote to approve the General Obligation Capital Notes and Facilities Maintenance Bonds, Series 2023A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The bonds are approved. The sale of the bonds are approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you once again, and are just thrilled with the results. So thanks again.
Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Expenditure Budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening. So in order for intermediate school district 287 to access and other cooperatives to access long-term facilities maintenance revenue, each member district of the cooperative must pass by board resolution, the approval of the district's proportionate share for the fiscal year in question, as well as approving their overall 10-year plan. And so that's why this action is before you tonight. The district's proportionate share for fiscal year '25 will be $67,520. And with that, the recommended action is before you.
Questions from board members? No? All those in favor of approving the, the long-term, the 2025 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Expenditure Budget, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The fiscal year 2025 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Expenditure Budget is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the Food Services Management Contract Renewal for 2023, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I believe we have some individuals from ChartWells here. Thank you for sitting through our board meeting. I'm sure you learned a lot.
Yes, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, once again. In the spring of 2022, the district conducted a rather robust RFP and selection process for our food service vendor contract. ChartWells received the highest score of the three vendors that underwent the more robust process. During the current school year, we've received really positive feedback regarding their performance from a variety of stakeholders, including students, staff members, administration, as well as our food service, our food wellness committee. And due to that feedback, we're super confident in recommending that we extend their contract by one more school year at least, and that's why the recommended action is before you tonight. With me, we've got several members of the team. We thought it'd be great for you to put a face to the name of the wonderful folks that are feeding our children on a daily basis. Any comments from the team?
I just wanted to thank you. So all of us are new this year. My name is Kirsten Kruzenga. I'm the Food Service Director. This is Abby Dollarshell. She's my Assistant Director. And this is Christian Kloon. He's our Executive Chef. Yes, nice to meet you. Finally put a face to all of your names. I was just talking to them how special this district is, and how we all are just so excited for the, like, the coming year. And we sit down, and we have meetings, and we're just so excited to, like, keep giving you better food options for these kids. Just a really great district to work with. So thank you.
Thank you. We absolutely appreciate all of you and working in food services. It's one of the things that sometimes you take for granted during COVID. We're like, wow, we need to get our kiddos fed. And so it's an integral part of our school system. So thank you for what you do. Do any board members have questions about the contract? Director Neville?
I don't have questions about the contract. I just want to thank you for the partnership. I just want to thank you for the partnership, for the fact that we've been able to do this for a period of time. I'm grateful. And for pointing out the value of what you do. Well-fed students can learn and you make learning possible. So thank you.
Director Kabler?
I, too, want to thank you for the work. I know a lot of your staff members are here long before students hit the buildings. And I asked my three students about the food service when I saw we were going to be talking about it. They said, oh, it is. It's better this year. So I echo that. The three at my house agreed with that. And then I learned, a fun fact, a couple weeks ago, that you have an employee at Highlands that is 92 years old. Is this true?
Yes.
Is she the oldest employee we have? I probably can't ask that.
No, you can't.
I just think that that's amazing. And she said she likes to, she gets, I asked my elementary school. She said, oh, she gets hugs every day from some of the kids. So just wanted to give her a little shout-out. Donna?
Yes. I'll let her know you say that.
Okay.
Anything else? Before we vote, if you could, to Karen's vote, not about the age of our employees, if you could pass along how grateful we are to those that actually serve the kids. I'd really appreciate that. We will now vote to approve the food service management contract for 2023. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The contract is approved. Thank you. We'll move on to our policy review. Do I have a motion to approve policies 701, 702, 703, 704, 705, 706, and 707?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll turn it over to Policy Chair Neville for our policy review.
There, I think, I appreciate all the comments we had at our discussion at the last board meeting. We have no changes except for the one that I think was requested at the board, that we change language. And policy 703, Accounting Appendix 1B, Number 1, had a reference to what was known as Secretary's Day to Administrative Professionals Day. And that change has been updated. But other than that, Mert, is there anything that you'd like to share about this series or these policies?
Yeah, I'm prepared to review the major changes that were made as part of the policy. However, in order to expedite the process, we can also move right to action.
I would love to move right to action unless board members would like to review all the changes. Hearing no objections, I will move to action. We will now vote to approve policies 701, 702, 703, 704, 705, 706, and 707. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 701 through 707 are approved. Thank you very much for all your work this month. I appreciate it. That is all for our action items. We now are going to move to board leadership and committee updates. Do any of our committees have any updates?
I have one quick update from the LAC. And that is just to let community members, and students especially, know that applications are now open for the LAC and are available on the website in the LAC portion of the school board section.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make a quick announcement for our 287 families. Graduation for the different programs at 287 will be held on Tuesday, June 6 and Wednesday, June 7. And it's my first time, my opportunity, I just got the list of it. I look forward to participating in several of those for our students.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now move to superintendent updates.
Thank you. So first of all, I'm really excited to announce that one of our students, Anand, on our Career Technical Education Advisory Committee, has worked with other committee members to organize our very first career fair, which will be held on Thursday, April 27, from 10:30 to 1:30 p.m. This is a great opportunity for local business owners. If you're looking for some summer employees, they're, in my opinion, are no greater than RE-DINA students. So we really encourage you to sign up to join the career fair. Then the other thing that I'd like to mention before I move to several just amazing letters that we've received about our staff and students in the community is, community members may have read the information in the Sun Current or in Star Tribune about a piece of property that we submitted a letter of intent to purchase. And I just wanted to provide some clarity that we were contacted by Sun Tide Realtor directly. They reached out to me on March 13. And Mert Woodard, our Director of Business Services, and Eric Hamilton, our Director of Building and Grounds, and I went and toured the property. Knowing Edina and knowing the fact that we could purchase just over, well, about 3.36 acres of land for what they were asking for, for $2 million, we just decided that it is just an incredible investment and we needed to try to add that to our portfolio. I do understand and knowing that we went through a $4 million cost containment recently, I think it is very important to let the community know that the funds that we would use in order to purchase the property in the event that they selected us are restricted operating capital funds. Those are dollars that cannot be used for anything else except for purchase of property, construction, things like that. So we would never be able to use those funds based on statute to pay for teacher salaries or, you know, to hire paraprofessionals or anything like that. And I think it's important to make certain that the community has that information. So then I'll move on to just some incredible letters that I've received from the community and actually across the United States. I can't wait for individuals to hear about this. But first of all, I'd like to recognize a couple of our students, Abid and Zoya Hassan, who actually organized an opportunity for individuals yesterday, this was yesterday, to receive free glasses. And so there was a company that donated 141 pairs of frames. And then free lenses were provided by Cherry Optical in Green Bay, Wisconsin. They organized this themselves and absolutely delighted that 141 individuals were able to get eyeglasses who could not afford them. So congratulations and really proud of Abid and Zoya Hassan. So here is a letter that came from a family member. She says, hello, friends. I just want to reach out to commend Elena Zapata for her support and care for her students. So much is thrown at teachers and Elena has gone above and beyond improvising tools and solutions for students who need extra help. She has gone outside of the realm of, quote unquote, "just a teacher" to help advocate for our son and assist in educating us. Her patience, resources, and support do not, all uppercase, go unnoticed. You probably are not aware, but our son has some special needs to assist in his development. We are going through the process for diagnosis and support through the medical field as well as the school. Elena has had extra meetings with us to get on the same page. Elena has created safe spaces, family books, a calming kit, introduced headphones, just been there while he processed his big emotions. We're in the process of him being evaluated for school services through Richfield and have been on a waitlist since September. Every time I speak with Richfield, they have been amazed at the tools that Elena has set in place for our son and can't really recommend any other things to do as Elena has already done them. I want to say thank you to Elena and for you to understand how important she is and how impactful she has been in my family's life. Please let me know how we can recognize her more. And so this is her public recognition. And she says, thank you for the support and energy you, the district, gives to Elena. Without that understanding of leaders, it does not happen. Thank you, Rebecca. And then here is another email thanking many, many teachers at our high school from Katie and Tom Dalton. And they are so grateful for the past four years that their son has had, that all of their kids have had, actually. They mentioned Mr. Buckley, Ms. Ramirez. They mentioned Ms. Stirfranzen and Ms. Boulton Graham. And they say our sophomore is finding his way despite the challenges of being part of the, quote unquote, "COVID bubble" and losing ground during the pandemic. Thanks to his amazing teachers, he is rebuilding his math and English foundations and working to build back his, quote unquote, "brain stamina," if that's really a thing. They wrote that in there. Although executive functioning skills will always be a challenge, he is getting there. He's got a truly terrific group of teachers. He feels supported. And even when classes are tough, he isn't giving up, which had been an issue in the past. A huge thanks to Mrs. Abdella and Mrs. Benson for individualizing their lessons to support students. They also want to thank Mr. Visonore and Mr. Amborn and Ms. Landers as well. We can't tell you how much we appreciate each and every, oh, I missed a couple. Mr. Boltman and Ms. Bolko. We can't tell you how much we appreciate each and every one of these people. They are, all of your staff, they and all of your staff are making a positive difference in our students' lives. It has been a long winter haul and we wanted to say we appreciate and thank you. We hope you enjoy your well-needed break that came to us just before spring break. So it's a little like getting out there. Then finally, you know, we had our students on a cruise and they actually performed on a cruise. Now, I just want to say, there were probably 50 or 60 letters that came in from cruise members, just thrilled and, I received voice messages, just thrilled. You know, just for our students and how they performed and also just how they acted on the ship. So I'm just going to read a couple. This is from Ryan Aldridge in Denver, Colorado. He says, I was recently on the cruise that your high school band was on and I can't say enough nice things about them. The two concerts we saw were great and you could tell the kids loved it and are very talented. When we saw them throughout the ship, they were always friendly, happy, and well-behaved. I heard nothing but positive things from the other passengers, too. Just wanted to let you know, you have a great group of kids. Please pass the compliment on to the band director and their staff support, too. They did an amazing job. And Paul and I have spoke every time one came in. I would send Paul an email or I called him to talk to him about this. Here's another one from The Villages in Florida, which is in central Florida, north of Orlando. You probably know where that is. Erica? So, dear Dr. Stanley, it is with awesome memories that I write this note of thanks to you on behalf of Director Paul Kyle and the students of Edina High School. Mr. Paul Kyle and the students entertained the passengers with the two concerts presented on the Regal Princess last week. These two concerts were some of the most special times on this cruise for me. I thoroughly enjoyed every minute of both shows. I only wish there could have been more. It is very obvious that Mr. Kyle has worked with these students in a very special way. They were extremely polite, well-behaved, and I must say, extremely talented. Hats off to Mr. Kyle for all his work with these young people. It was so refreshing to be around such polite and talented folks. Mr. Kyle is to be commended for his talent and what he is doing for our young folks today. I hope you will thank him as well. I did. Thank you for allowing these students to be part of my vacation as it was their vacation as well. And that is from Debbie Durhoff, again, of The Villages in Florida. Again, I received many, many of those and I won't read all of them tonight, but it just really speaks to just the excellence, excellence, excellence that all, you know, that are, all of our teachers, all of our band, you know, I'm sure that we would hear this from orchestra as well, and I'm just so incredibly proud of them. So here is an email from Shopa Guticonda. Says, hello, a couple of exclamation points. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the noticed effort and hard work on the Kids' Club program. You heard a lot of feedback and, in my opinion, incorporated it perfectly. I'm sure developing the prioritization criteria wasn't easy, but what you came up with makes total sense, all uppercase letters. And how refreshing to not, all uppercase letters, have a first-come, first-served system that typically benefits those who have certain privileges. The online enrollment was super slick, took me less than five minutes. So a heartfelt thank you for all that you did and all that you continue to do to support our community. Shopa. And that is it.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for reading those. Yeah, I know. Thank you. Wonderful to end on a high note. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.